Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, May 7, 2018 City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
I have Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Vine.
Here.
Alderman Flapp.
There.
Alderman Haddock.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Jeff. Here. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our favor.
At this time, I'd like to call the public hearing to order at 7:02 PM. This public hearing is regarding the annexation agreement between the City of McHenry, Speedway Incorporated, Christian Kalaschevsky, and First Midwest Bank, and 13-4-5-5, and Fuller Properties, which consists of 7.59 acres, more or less, and is located at the northwest corner of Illinois State Route 120 and Ringwood Road in the City of McHenry's, in the City of McHenry, also known as 2009 Ringwood Road, McHenry, Illinois 60050. At this time, I'm looking for a motion. No?
It's here.
All right, we're in it.
We're in it.
All right, first person on the list here is Frank Serpico.
Yeah.
If you don't mind stepping up to the podium. State your name and address for public record, please.
5608 Chesapeake Drive, McHenry. Want me to take it all through anything?
No.
Okay. I just wanted people knowing who know, obviously they don't know. On April 27th, Lake of the Hills, okay, voted night, kind of the same thing we are here. And their answer was that they had a school nearby, and they didn't like the traffic and all the rest of this stuff. And Speedway came back, and their answer was, okay, that we're only gonna, we're keeping a log, and all we're gonna do is allow everybody that comes into place to have two beers. You may have one, that is Miller's, or one, that is Coors. And they were gonna keep a log, okay, and keep track of who the people were that were coming in to have the beer, the dates and the time they were having it, kind of beer they had, and the employee who gave them the beer. Now, I tell you right now, all the trustees voted no. Okay? It was that simple. They obviously didn't like what they had. Okay? Now, you have a problem here that I believe, first of all, let me tell you who I am. I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering, so I can read plans, just so you know. You fellows have problems with water over there. You might not know it. We at Chesapeake, being at the lower part of the hill, just like you are, have a tremendous amount of water coming down. We do not, our ponds do not freeze during winter. I don't care if it's 18 below, they don't freeze. Now, you have a pond on the northeast corner that I believe is a retention pond, okay? Which is means that just a pond that's gonna contain water. All right? Now, that baby, if I recall, is about seven, eight feet deep. You've gotta drop an elevation, just like we do at Chesapeake, around 14 feet from that west side to that east side. You're gonna get a lot of water there, guys. On the other corner, where the streetlights are, you're also having a retention pond, I think that's, it's a detention pond. Take that. Difference being, the detention pond's gotta have the water go someplace where the other one doesn't. Retention pond does not. It just stays there. Now, you've got an elevation drop there to the bottom of your pond there that you're putting in, okay, of 20 feet. And that's only to your edge of your property. The hill still goes up, I believe, so you might have a drop of 30 feet. You guys are gonna pick up a lot of water down there. All right? You've got a high level of about four feet above the bottom, which means the water after that's gonna be flowing out. I somebody, I don't know where I heard this, but you're gonna need a fence around that place, because you're gonna have some nuts wanting to take a swim in there, just sure as hell. And I don't know whether you're gonna put a fence around the retention pond, which is up on their outside, and then you're gonna have alcohol. This is a problem. You know, they, Lake of the Hills did not okay because they thought there was a school there, I guess called Lincoln Prairie, not mistaken. They didn't wanna put an image to those elementary kids that you have gambling and alcohol in that particular situation. And they voted no. That's why they voted, only for that reason. If you want, don't believe it, go to the internet, look it up. There's just, there's so many things there that are just unbelievable. I noticed that you guys, gentlemen, have voted down that you do not want any overnight parking of any kind of trailers that pull in there. I'm happy to hear that. Does that bother some of the people in our association to have 18 waiters, if that's where they might be, parked over there overnight? I know you put a stop on that. I appreciate that. I just hope that it lasts beyond the date that you're building this thing, like 10 years from now, because that can be a disastrous one for Chesapeake. Oh, that's all I have to say, gentlemen. I thank you for your time. That's my opinion. I have not represented the association. That's my opinion. So, do what you may, guys.
Thank you, Frank. I'd also like to just say that, you know, just so everyone's on the same page, we are not allowing an open port establishment at this gas station. So, just, just so you know, it's packaged liquor. Okay? Just, it's not like the Lake of the Hills location. All right, next person on the list is Judy Walters. Please step up to the podium.
A little earlier than I thought, but, okay. Mayor and Alderman, and ladies and gentlemen, I would like to first of all back up what Frank said. I, we feel that this has gotten a little bit out of hand. We have a great deal. We have four of our proud members of our board here, our whole as an association board, including me. Our president is here, along with John Sewell and Cat Catler. We agree with what Frank said. We do not and are not in favor of this segment going in, not only because of the school, but because of the gaming, and the lighting, and the traffic it is gonna cause. There are four items that I would like to mention. One of the things that a lot of our members have not addressed is, if you do approve this, what can we do to make our lives better at Chesapeake? And those are the four issues that I would like to address tonight. First of all, the one that has bothered us and is most obvious is the 80-foot-tall sign. Now, my question is, has that been addressed in private sessions? And if so, what are your plans for that?
Usually, public hearing, we won't answer any of the questions.
Yeah, they may be dealt with, but you should get out all your questions now.
Okay, all right, I will. But I was told that Mr. Martin at the zoning meeting, that this would be handled here at the, at the, at the city council meeting. Okay? We are just appalled at the idea that an 80-foot sign would be going in Western McHenry on Route 120. That is for a huge town on an interstate. It does not belong in our small town. We feel that that in itself, I do know of one company, one business, a little farther down 120, that has a fairly large sign, but it's a lot lower. And I'm speaking of Sunnyside Automobile Dealership. Please consider this strongly, that 80-foot sign is a real bug. I don't care whether you have lights that are going down, directed down to the ground, or whether they shine outwards. They will be seen by us, and particularly by those people that are on the south side of our complex. The second thing I wish to mention is the amount of signage. You have a 200-square-foot limit of signage for the City of McHenry. Speedway is requesting 426.3 square feet. That is more than double the city limit. And if you continually go in, are going over the limit, then why have a limit in the first place? So, the amount of signage really, really bothers us. The third thing I would like to address is our, the berm. Speedway has volunteered to build a five-foot-tall berm. This berm is not by any means tall enough. We request, and for the safety of our homeowners, and to keep their property values from going totally in the tank. A berm that is tall enough, either made tall enough by the berm itself, or by fast-growing evergreen trees, or by a tall fence on top of it, I don't care, we don't care which, but it should be blocking our homeowners' view of the back of the Speedway station. The fourth thing I wish to address is, and it still concerns the berm, we are concerned about the fact that Speedway could possibly not even ever build that berm. They could sell that property to the north of them, between the back of their station and our property line. It is, I believe, something like 400 and some odd feet from one to the other, and is approximately 3-point-whatever acres. And that scares us. I am hoping and praying, we are hoping and praying, that you can come up with some sort of plan to qualify the contract such that it would not be sold within a certain period of time. We would also appreciate your putting as part of the contract, a big berm for that. Now, understand, from reading the agenda and the information that Mr. Martin had sent to us, that you are planning to put the arborist in touch with Speedway to help design this landscaping between Speedway and us. Is that arborist Mike Harper by some chance?
Yes.
And Mike is quite able, no question about it. What bothers me about this is that the city obviously is pushing for this development, and Mike works for the city. And I'm afraid our interest would not be taken into consideration. So, if anything, I feel that one of our members should be on the committee that works with Speedway and with Mr. Harper, if that is the way it's going to be. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Judy. Just for clarification with, regarding to the signs, we're bringing this back for signing, signage approval and other approvals on June 4th. So, that's the reason we held it back, is to work with Speedway on the signage heights and the amount of signage space. So, just so you're aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next person is John Sewell.
I think I'm the last.
Yes, sir.
After somebody else. Am I finished?
Okay. Save the best for last.
I'm the last.
Make it good.
I'm not going to try to, to rehash the things that my colleagues have offered. Okay, I'm trying, I'm gonna try to offer a couple of other considerations, but I'm gonna ask you to do one thing. I'm gonna ask you to put your rubber stamps away, and listen to what we have to say, and then make up your mind. Okay? Fair enough? Our objection as an organization, I don't need this thing, is our, is not Speedway per se. It's the idea of putting this fueling station in the position that they're proposing to do it. That's our issue. We have no animosity in any way, shape, or form as, as towards Speedway. Now, a couple of considerations here. I did a little bit of homework. You know, this town of McHenry has at least 12 fueling stations in it, and probably more. Why do we need a number 13? For what purp, what purpose are they going to serve that the other ones are not? Other than antagonize some people who live up the hill? Gasoline prices in McHenry County and in the City of McHenry are somewhere between 12 and 16 cents a gallon higher than anywhere else. Why are people gonna come to McHenry to Station Number 13 to fuel up? It doesn't make economic sense, does it? The committee, the Strategic Planning Committee, has done, has published a number of very, very fine documents, one of which is a, is one that was, I guess, the result of a, of a conference that was held someplace, and they very, very simply ended up putting a list of positives and negatives that were, that should be considered, as far as the development of the City of McHenry. Was interesting, because there were a couple of things that they, they said that were the negative, one of which were traffic congestion, congestion, and traffic flow, as being a negative. This does not alleviate that situation. If you include this, this Station Number 13, in our judgment, what it's only going to do is to increase that. Okay? So, here we are. We got, we got a situation where people are paying more money for gas, and plus that, you've got all this congestion that's gonna be going on. That's, you've got existing congestion, and this is gonna, going to add to it. Oh, yes, I've seen the traffic studies. But yet, your own engineer, who submitted a document, raises the point that maybe there's going to be some additional congestion that's gonna occur because of this thing. Something to consider, huh? So, I suppose from our point of view, the way we look at it is, okay, we're going to have congested, more congestion, we're gonna have noise, we're gonna have, we're gonna have lights, we're gonna have all the things that my colleagues talks about. So, the question is, what's in it for us? What's in it for us? And I can't see an answer, gentlemen. I really can't. Going back to this, to this list of pluses and minuses that I talked about a little earlier, a couple of things they said. There were things missing. There wasn't a grocery facility here on this end of town, and that's right, that still exists. Is this gonna alleviate that? No. There are a couple of things of my own, my own feelings. Upscale restaurants, maybe some upscale beauty salons, maybe some, some clothing stores, those kinds of things. That's what I would love to see in that, in that space, not Station 13. I'm gonna ask you tonight to do one of two things. You either kill this, this deal, or you, and you vote to investigate it further, because it has all kinds of holes in it, and it should be considered. And I think it's part of your deliberative function to be able to look at those things and make up your mind. I'm almost through. Take a look at the green, at the report that was submitted to you by, by the Green Corporation, which are the city, the city engineers, and look at some of the issues that they arose, that arose in that report. And those deserve some consideration, and they deserve some, some explanation and some discussion. That is the one that was written in April of 2013. And finally, I got a couple of, couple of things to lay, to put on you. We read in the paper about all the folks that are being drawn to Mariano's grand opening in Crystal Lake. My question when I read that is, why does Crystal Lake get Mariano's, and we're looking at Station 13? Why? Why is that? So, again, please consider the facts as we try to present them, and make up both your conscience, not your rubber stamps. Thank you.
Mr. Sewell? Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the public hearing portion? I see none. At this time, we're looking for a motion to cause the public hearing portion of this meeting. Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman McCaff. Howard Naddock, 7.
Yes.
Alderman Flapp?
Yes.
Alderman Vine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, I am for A, is I'm looking to, for a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the mayor's execution of an annexation agreement between the City of McHenry, Speedway Incorporated, and others, which consists of 7.59 acres, more or less, and is located at the northwest corner of Illinois State Route 120 and Ringwood Road in the City of McHenry, Illinois 60050. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Alderman.
Yeah. You know, one thing that was brought up was the drainage, and, hey, I took the drainage problems for quite a few years, and still have a lot of reservations, and I know that they've got different ideas of how they can handle it and everything else, but sometimes I look at our ordinances and wonder whether or not that is protective enough or not. And, I don't know, I tend to wonder if we shouldn't be looking at this a little closer than we are on the, on the drainage, and how, how that whole thing's gonna work. The additional property, what's gonna go on with that, you know, no commitment on what the development of that property is that we're gonna annex in. So, again, I just have some reservations on that at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Alderman Vine?
I agree with Alderman about the drainage issue. We've got problems in, throughout my ward with the drainage, and as far as the additional property as well.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, can somebody from staff clarify the, there's a provision in here, easement for a pumping station? Can you just talk to that issue a little bit, as to what were future plans that are there?
Sure, I can address that. Right now, we have a booster pump station across the street by the bank. It's underneath our site. So, what that pumping station does, it's, it's, you know, pot of water, drinking water, up the hill. And when there's a large demand up on top of the hill, the booster pump kicks on to supplement the pressure. That pump was sized just for that development, and if we ever have any future development up that way, we would need a site. Our long-term plan showed another booster pump on the opposite side of the, to supplement any future development. We, at this point, we don't plan on doing anything, just having that property.
Just have the ability to do that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. The, the property to the, so roughly, as I understand the, what we're looking at here, in effect, this property is basically, the southern half of it is proposed for this fueling station, but the northern half, in our measure of the acreage, is three acres or so. That is undefined at this point, is that my understanding?
Correct, with, with the exception of the berm, which is perpetual.
Right. So, and the berm is, I know one, the one gentleman mentioned it's five feet, is that, we were looking at that the other day, is that, is that, I thought it was a little more than that, but is that fair assessment, that it's roughly five feet?
I'll let the architect explain these, an engineer.
Hi, my name is Chris Kalaschevsky from WT Group, and with me is Peter Perkowitz from Speedway. And in regards to the actual berm itself, it's actually going to be five at the low side, going up to six, or it could be higher, from the north, or from the south side, it's actually up to 13 feet. So, it's, it's a rather large berm. The width of the berm is basically, if you started at the back of the end zone, it'd be going all the way out to the 25-yard line. So, this is not just a little blip in, in the road per se.
Yeah, can you point on there, where's, where's the heights you're talking about?
So, here, we're talking right here, 797, going all the way up to 804, and we start with 788, so it depends on the grades here. So, we're, like I say, 796 here, to 804, so quite a range going over there. And what we're proposing is, as was mentioned, was, this is half the property, so 400 feet, and Speedway does not have any plans for this area. So, what we have is the, the proposed use as close to the intersection as possible, then a large detention area that will meet not only McHenry County, but will meet the, I'm sorry, McHenry requirements, but also the county requirements, and also we need to meet the state requirements as well. So, we have a large detention area right in this area, and then a supplemental one just in this corner. So, you have the auto canopy, you have the C-store itself, then you have the CFL lanes, large detention area, landscaping, large amount of green area, big berm, new landscaping, and then you have seen all the existing landscaping that's there, the mature growth of the trees, as well as, on, on the property owner's side, they have a six-foot-high hedge that goes all the way along there. So, we feel this will be provided very nice buffer, and with what Speedway is offering, very high-quality materials, a full masonry-bearing building with architectural shingles, and as you can see, for this development here, this sign, like our property is basically in this area here, so we are just developing this portion, so you can see all the open land that will be between, between us and our neighbors to the north. Speedway is a very sensitive community in that they're very much likely involved in their communities, and very much love and cherish all items within their community. They do children's miracle net work and such, and so they should make a strong stance in the community that they're in, and always try to be a good man.
Sir, so, on the berm?
Yes, sir.
Which was only an original question. If I'm standing on the north side of that berm, say on the street that fronts the, those Chesapeake condos, how high is that berm that I'm looking at?
If you're about here, tell me... So we have a large detention area right in this area, and then a supplemental one just in this corner. So you have the auto canopy, you have the C store itself, then you have the CFL lanes, large detention area landscaping, large amount of green area, big burn, new landscaping. And then you have seen all the existing landscaping that's there, the mature growth of the trees. As well as, on the property owner's side, they have a six-foot-high hedge that goes all the way along there. So we feel this will be provided very nice buffer. And with what Speedway is offering, very high-quality materials. Full masonry-bearing building with architectural shingles. And as you can see, for this development here, this sign, like our property is basically in this area here. So we are just developing this portion, so you can see all the open land that will be between us and our neighbors to the north. Speedway is a very sensitive community in that they very much like to get involved in their communities and very much love and cherish all items within their community. They do children's miracle network and such. And so they make a strong stance in the community that they're in and always try to be a good neighbor.
Sir, so on the burn?
Yes, sir.
Which was only an original question. If I'm standing on the north side of that burn, say on the street that fronts the, those Chesapeake condos, how high is that burn that I'm looking at?
If you're about here, it's gonna be about five feet, and by the time you get to here, it's gonna be about eight feet.
Okay, so it's five to eight feet. So I mean, the effective screening is five to eight feet?
But we're working with the landscaper to see if there's gonna be evergreens on top of that or if the mounding will be adjusted. This is, this is statement, as I say, you can see the width of this. This is not, this is not just a narrow thing. This is 35 yards.
No, I understand that the width doesn't really have anything to do with screening. It's the height that really impacts the screens.
True, but the wider the burn, the higher you can go.
Oh, sure. So, I mean, we could go, you could go even higher than that.
And so we are committed to working with the city landscaper to provide the adequate screen from the resident.
And the landscaping that's down on just the north side of the facility there, what are those trees? I mean, what are we talking there?
Yeah, we're talking trees right here, the sitias, as well as trees here and bushes along in these areas here. There's more trees and bushes along in this area. And so we have to really develop a final landscape plan that will detail all the rest. We have initial one in your packet, but of course, the final one will be approved by.
Can you talk then also about the lighting? I read some information in here about the directionality, if you will, of the planned lighting. Can you speak to that? And I know we're not talking about signage tonight, that that's gonna be at a later date. But there's gonna be obviously parking lot-type lights or whatever that you have around the facility, right?
Right, and that will work also in terms of your heights. You don't have a specific height requirement in your code, so we'll work with that. So basically, all the lights are called, well, you've heard the phrase, LED, light-emitting diodes. And what that is a light-emitting diode, is a very directional, very controllable light. You can put the optics in the fixture itself to do exactly what you want. And so we have basically, on any lights that are back here, so we'll have a light here, here, kinda going all ways, and they will be all what's called forward throw. So first of all, the light fixture doesn't go below the canopy or the actual housing of the yard light. So that's key right there. Sure, you've seen the old-time gas stations that had the Scottsdales that hung down, very much heavy glare, metal halide, and you saw them from everywhere. Here, they're very much focused down, and they define, under the canopy, they define the faces of the dispensers, because under the canopy, you are in our store. You are in a task-oriented environment. So very important to wash the faces of the dispensers. And the yard lights themselves just provide general illumination based on the IESNA, that's the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, which I'm a member, regulations for what a gas station should be in this area. And so we have the safe lighting from there. So again, it's very directional and very front-focused, and there's no backsplash. You can control exactly the amount of foot candles. When we do the polymetric plan, this area in here is going to be zero, let alone on the other side of the burn.
What do you mean by that, in zero?
In terms of when you do a reading on the ground of what the lighting is produced, we'll be at zero foot candles in this region.
Zero foot candles, really?
The reading on the ground, yeah.
Okay. So those light, you know, I don't think the canopy lights are really an issue, but I guess the lighting around where the trucks go through at the north edge of the pavement, I guess that would be the lighting that would be of most concern. You know, how tall are those lights? You're saying, now, those are all forward, in other words, facing 120, is that what you're?
Yes, but not only facing, but the way the optics shoot it. But remember, our site is, we have a 23-foot fall corner to corner. We're down already 16 feet from up here, beginning with, without a burn. So we're down 16 feet already. Then we put our poles, basically, they're on a two-foot concrete. And then the poles themselves will be the 20-foot, so you're about 22. So really, from this starting point, our lights are only 16 minus the 22. So here, it's about six feet. And then you have this five-to-six-foot burn that already, and if we put nevergreen on top of that, we're gonna be on top of the lights. So this is a very unique site, right? Because you have a very large hill going to the west here, the roads are curving, all this land is falling here. So it's a unique situation in that, through not equal plane terms, it's dramatically lower in providing a very continuous, all-year-round physical visual bearing.
One last question for me. The, I think I understand from the diagrams and what I read, but basically, the exits on Ringwood Road, all traffic coming out pretty much is southbound? It goes to 120, right?
We wanna make this very, very clear. We have three exit points, we have three curb cuts. But this one is an entrance for the trucks and an entrance for the cars, as well as an exit for the cars. But the trucks come in off of 120. They come around here, they stack before the fuel lanes. Only two trucks can fuel at the time. Side thought, in terms of some of the comments that were made about multiple gas stations in that, Speedway makes a full marketing study. How many house tops, how many businesses are there, how many fuel, available fuel gallons there are, and what the demand is. They do a full-blown market study. They would not be putting in millions and millions of dollars if they didn't feel the market was there that needed this product. And they feel that it's in surplus dramatically. But anyway, so they're pulling in, the trucks park here. This dark line is what our customers usually do. They will pull forward, and then the truck will go, trucker will go into the store while this next truck comes in and fuels. Several distinctions between us and a truck stop. There is no designated parking lot for the trucks. There's no overnight parking. There is no showers, wash machines, dryers that are typical in a truck stop. There's no truck desk, there's no full-serve sit-down restroom. This is truly for the existing customers that are on 120 today. The customers that are passing by, right now, passing this site, that's what this station is for. You all know, you're sitting and watching the football game at home, and do you all of a sudden, oh, I gotta fill up my car and hit gas, so I gotta go to the gas station and come back? No, you do it when you go to work, when you're coming home from work. Truck drivers do it in their routes, as they go to their routes. So a gas station is not a destination use. That's a really key thing to understand. The gas station also has different peak periods. A morning rush, the evening rush, the school rush is right in the middle. So it's a perfect use for this, as opposed to a destination use that would draw traffic into here and that would have continuous use throughout. So with the trucks, they come in, they fuel, they pull out here. And as you can see, we purposely angled this to, to your point, sir, make a right-hand turn going down Ringwood and then going to 120. So none of the truck traffic is gonna go up Ringwood. It's all gonna come in off of 120. Our auto customers have an option of right in, right in here and right out. Or if they do wanna go northbound on Ringwood, they would come out here to the light and go that way.
So, excuse me, one final question. So if I'm a, if I'm a truck driver coming through town, say I'm coming from the west on 120, so I'm going this way on your diagram, and I do not?
I'm sorry, going west or coming from?
I'm sorry, heading east, but coming from the west.
Okay.
And I do not get gas there or diesel fuel there. Where's the closest place that a semi-truck would get fuel? Is there anywhere in McHenry that a semi-truck can actually pull?
Not yet, no.
Not that I'm aware of. And again, our customer base is not the long, over nationwide haulers. They have gas programs with major travel centers, truck stops. They have their fueling cards and that. Our customer is the gravel trucks. And the trucks, the day-delivery trucks, that are on the road today going past the site. It is not the ones that are going from Pacific to Atlantic Ocean that have their, you know, their programs with TA and Petro and all that. One of the things I'd like to, could I clarify just one point?
Sure.
Lakin Hills is open today. There was no, to my knowledge, anything with the beer and that. Lakin Hills is open today, doing well. It is a smaller facility, just in terms of the landlotness. And so that's why it doesn't have trucks on there. So we just wanna make that clarification. If there are any other points that were made during the discussion that you'd like me to address, I'm free to answer those.
Is there any other questions or comments by council? Alderman Schaefer?
It was mentioned that there was a six-foot hedge also proposed. Is that?
What I said, the six-foot hedge, what I said, that's actually existing on the north property right now. Right along their drive, they have this hedge going all the way across. And they have very mature trees that are growing on both sides of the creek. And then what we would propose on our side is new landscaping with trees down here. If you need something on top of the burn, something on top of it.
A question for staff. I don't think we have another station in town with this much space between it and residents whatsoever, do we? This, as I'm going through it, this is the greatest amount of space, the largest burn than we have in any existing, pre-existing location that you can think of? Well, if you go, the only thing I can think of is if you go on North Richmond Road, you probably, there is space, not with this much land area, no.
Correct.
But space between residents, there probably is this much space, but not with this much land area. And then the other question I had was, is the size of the gas tanks for holding the fuel any different for a gas station this size versus what you're requesting?
No, they are all underground. Other than the state of California and the City of New York, Illinois has the toughest state fire marshal regulations for underground tanks. We not only have that double-wall tanks, double-wall piping, interstitial monitoring of the tank itself and of the sumps below the dispensers and of the pumps at the tanks themselves. So we have to have no less than four visits from the state fire marshal as we're building this. So we, all underground, all leak detection, all monitored. Larnes will go off if there's any issues. And it's all, we have to have records that we need to produce for our yearly state fire marshal inspection.
So I had for right now?
Thank you. Alderman Santi? What percentage of the fueling will be diesel? What's the estimate of how much of your fuel purchases are gonna be diesel?
I would say with the two lanes, if this was a 50/50 situation, this would probably be four or five lanes here, and these are only two lanes. So it's based upon the truck. So I would say 30%, approximately, yeah, about 30%.
So for the most part, it's gonna be, it's gonna be standard vehicles, you know, smaller pickup trucks, trucks and cars? Excuse me. I know you can't really get in depth on an answer here. Trying, understanding that you do have a three-acre piece that's gonna be open between Chesapeake Hills and where this is located. Normally, if Speedway has gone through a process like this, with having this amount of land space that would be annexed into the city along with the station, what's their business plan that they normally work on in regards to? Do they go to a developer for developing that land? Do they try to just sell it themselves or develop it themselves at any time in the future?
Working with Robert Schroeder, who was planning on being here and unfortunately, illness kept him from being here, who is part of the real estate. Working with him, really, this is the focus. And because this is a parcel that wanted to be sold as one parcel, we're purchasing the whole thing. This is really not big enough to have a overall scheme in terms of getting a developer involved and going to ICSC and getting potential users. So this really, quite frankly, from Speedway's standpoint in my discussions with Robert, is what's being proposed. We really don't see an applicable use in that small area.
And a real quick question to staff then, in regards to, when we're bringing in a piece of land with this annexation and zoning, what has to come back to us? Or maybe the better question is, what does not have to come back to us in regards to development? Or does everything have to come back to the council?
Just the signage.
Just the signage would have to come back to the council?
This has to, this still has to go to full, this has to go to full engineering after this.
And I'm speaking about the open piece of land?
Oh, if anything goes there?
Anything, yeah, it has to come.
It's not, it's not being subdivided right now, so it would have to come back to council?
It would have to come back to council.
They would have to subdivide it or they'd have to get zoning relief.
Okay, thanks. And one more, just to confirm something. You sounded very positive in regards to when you're building these burns, that if more landscaping needs to be done in regards to trees and things like that, you know, you said it would be, you wouldn't have any problem in doing that if we were gonna request it from our side? Because they have to come back with landscaping plans, correct? To us?
We do, and we're willing to work with it. As I said at the beginning, Speedway is very much wanting to be a good neighbor in terms of all the communities in there.
Thank you. I have no further questions right now. Alderman Schaefer?
The, what's the count on the other side for fueling stations, fueling positions?
For the auto you see here, each one of these represents a dispenser. So you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in line. Now, an inline is one row of dispensers versus a tandem, where you have two rows. You typically saw those, and it was typical for eight and in all the other ways. But a tandem, the problem with a tandem is when you're a patron, either on the roadway or just getting on the site, you really can't see what's open. What happens is you come in and you find your way is blocked because there's someone at that fire pump and you can't get through. So this is really the safest, the most convenient layout. So it's a standard eight, typical in the industry, but it's done in an inline manner, which is more.
Eight, eight thing with two on, one on each side, so sixteen total? Sixteen states fueling supply.
And what this does, the inline alleviates any backups, you know, if you have the tandem, it gets people starting the backups.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Glenn?
I just wanted to comment about, been a lot of discussion about buffers with different types of rope and everything else. And I just want, the council and most of you who weren't here or are not even remembered when we annexed and expanded gravel that many years ago, back in 1998, there were 100 large Austrian pine trees that were, that the city made mire material build. And probably after the first year, there might have been a dozen left. And I doubt there's one or two left right now. So, over the years, when people talk about landscape, you know, buffering, just remember that, you know, Mother Nature takes care of themselves. And if it dies off... And if it dies off, you know, maybe we need to make sure that there's something in there. The fact that it needs to be preserved and always cared for so that it doesn't fall apart. I'm sorry.
That's it?
On that, yeah, on that subject, that's everything I've got. I do have a few reservations as far as that left turn lane. And I realize with a left turn lane, that there's a lot of traffic when it comes down that hill. People, fortunately, you know, everybody does speed limits and whatnot. There's a little bit of reservation I have about that as well. So I'm trying to get comfortable with this and find it difficult to serve issues. So I'll just leave it at that for right now.
Okay. Any other questions, comments by council?
Just with traffic, traffic study's been done. Of course, we got to submit to I-DOT. I-DOT is very safety conscious, but also Speedway is in terms of, we know the two things that makes a gas station successful. It's got to be convenient, it's got to be safe. And so that left-hand turn lane is going to be a dedicated left-hand turn lane that you don't have today. So it will be a defined left-hand turn lane. So the traffic can, if out of fast-moving lanes, decelerate into acceleration portion and then finally come to a stop before it makes the turn.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
Me, Alderman Glenn, sorry. We looked at each other. No, I apologize.
No, another thing I was going to bring up is as far as these left turns in and out and all that. And that's the fact that their facility over in Carpenter'sville on 31 used to have a full access and they basically are blocked as far as pulling out of there and going south because of, on 31, the state came in and put in a total solid curve. There is no left turn to get into Speedway. You actually, very similar to what happened with BP over here on 31, as far as the package can't turn in or pass the gas station. So I don't know. If this doesn't pass tonight, I guess my question is, where does it go from here? Is it just totally dead? I mean, I, you know, I've always been a proponent for more gas stations. And I know a couple, a gentleman mentioned the fact, why do we need more gas stations? If you really look at how many gas stations we had 25 years ago and how much we grew in the last 25 years of population, we do need more gas stations. There's no advancing buts about it. And more is good only in the fact, if nothing else, of better competition. But that doesn't necessarily mean that every time somebody comes up with a proposition that I think I self-clear a couple of months ago about another location that I didn't want to see a gas station. I'm, like I said, I'm kind of, would you say on the fence right now? I don't know exactly where I stand on this. But I don't feel completely comfortable at this point. I don't know what it would take to make it completely. I guess one of the things that bothers me is just the fact that, and for clarification, if according to this annexation agreement, if we approve the annexation agreement, we also have to approve zoning of C2, and that is on the entire parcel of the annexed.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Which means that we have already committed to commercial on the rest of that. So.
And that's part of your comprehensive?
I understand it, you know. But again, once you have the zoning of C2 in there, then you kind of open the doors to a lot of other things that could go there. And we don't have too much to say on a lot of the different things that might want to come in.
So maybe I should butt in here a little bit, just so we don't get ourselves in the coffee shop situation again. The vote required to approve this annexation agreement, move on to the other two items, is two-thirds of this corporate authorities, which includes the mayor. So that's six votes. Without six votes, it fails and we really don't move on to the other items. If you're going to, if you're going to do that, if you're going to make a motion with regard to that substance, that's fine. Just know that's the vote. If you're going to make a motion to table it, as was suggested by the first two, Alderman, I would recommend that you give specific directions, not necessarily in the motion, but during the discussion or after the motion or some other time, as to what the staff is supposed to bring back so that you can make an informed decision. The motion to table suggests there's more issues that need to be resolved. For example, restricting the north, the stormwater issue and the landscape plan. If there's something that certain council members would like to see as part of that motion to table, then give us the direction so we can bring it back. But if you're ready to get to the substance, know it's a six-count vote.
At this time, I'm going to open up to a member in the public that would like to say something real quick.
Just one additional thing.
If you could come up to the podium, say your name for public record, I apologize. And your address, please.
John Demano, 5617 Chesapeake, Chesapeake Hills. One of the additional things being that this operation, if I'm not mistaken, is it a 24-hour deal? They open 24 hours, which makes it a lot more of a big decision to me. Because you're sitting there with a gas station and all these things happening all night long. Security, security is a big issue to me. When you have people at a cafe, people coming in all night and maybe buying some liquor, buying some lottery tickets or gambling or whatever. But being it's an all-night operation, I think if you take a good hard look at it, make sure that you make the right decision on this one. That's a big.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment or input on this item? See none? We have a motion and a second on the floor is, we want to change the motion to table this item. At least for the two that made the motion. Alderman, Santee?
Attorney McCarty, you said something about more restriction on the north side. Could you?
Well, there's going to be an agreement. We can, we can approach Speedway and say, what's the agreement? Are you going to develop the property or you're not going to develop it? They say they don't know. If they agree not to develop it for X number of years or not to develop it unless they come back and city council has complete say over the development, complete say, something to say about that development as opposed to just zoning classification. You know, we approve the use of the property or something to that effect. That's something that can be inserted into the agreement to make them come back to the table before they actually go and develop the property so that we take it into consideration, what's going there, other than just a zoning classification. They can agree to that. I don't know if they will or not, but it's something we haven't talked about.
But just remember that, as was mentioned by Mr. Martin, anything that would be proposed, and there's nothing against this, would have to be subdivided. So there is absolutely 100% guarantee that it's going in front of you.
No, no, that's not the point, though. Subdivision is a different topic. It has nothing to do with the use of the land. All it has to do is division of the land.
It gives the members of the body right here in the public the opportunity to comment on it.
Is everybody understood what I said?
Alderman, who made the second?
Oh, sorry, I didn't, sorry.
Jeff, Jeff.
A big motion. Okay, I was, that's why I wanted to ask that, I wanted to clear that up.
I'm comfortable with changing it to four. I guess what I don't see is six votes anyway, so I'm comfortable in changing it to.
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, and make the other Alderman happy.
Is the, whoever made the second going to agree to withdraw their second? I'll agree to that. Is there any more?
All right, I'm looking for a motion to table. In order to authorizing the mayor's execution for an annexation agreement between the city of McHenry, Speedway Incorporated and others, which consists of 7.5 million acres, more or less, and is located at the northwest corner of Illinois State Route 31, Route 120 and Rainwood Road in the city of McHenry, Illinois 6051.
With what? With, with direction for staff? With the three key components direction, because it's, it'll come back with some key components.
Stormwater?
Stormwater. And north area development.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Santee made that motion.
What was the third item?
The development of the north area.
Second? Alderman, time? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McKenna?
Yes.
And Alderman Schaefer?
Yes. And council? At this time, I'm looking for a motion to table items four B and four C. As written, Alderman Schaefer?
So moved.
Second, Alderman Santee?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McKenna?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes. And council? Thank you, everyone, from Chesapeake. Have a good night. All right.
People back here really can't hear. All the things have gone out. Some of the microphones are not even in front of the Alderman.
They're on.
I thought our church had the worst sound system. Believe me, this is.
Who did you hear?
It's very difficult for us to.
Okay.
Who did you hear specifically so we can direct that?
We have no speakers on air.
We could hear you, mayor, but the rest of them I couldn't hear. Also, some people don't remove their hands from in front of their mouths when they're speaking. Is this being tabled?
Yes, it's being tabled. All three items have been tabled. Okay? Yeah. That's what happened.
Let me just quickly table. Marathon Oil owns this company.
Sir?
We spun it off, okay? This company is Marathon Petroleum.
Oh, I see.
This company, I don't speak with Marathon Petroleum. A week ago today, Marathon Petroleum bought a company called Andebera. We paid $23 billion. It makes Marathon Petroleum the biggest oil refiner in the United States. You're not going to believe what I tell you. They refine 3 billion barrels of oil a day. So if you gentlemen vote against Speedway, they're not going to be doomed. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, there's two individuals beyond behalf of character counts that have been nominated by Kay Bates from the McHenry Chamber of Commerce for the outstanding work through the Thanksgiving Harvest. Over the last two years, we're receiving over 10,000 pounds of food to help replenish the local food pantries and food banks. So at this time, I ask two of the individuals and then Kay Bates, if you could come up here as well? Marty Campmeyer? And Lisa Cowher?
You got names, right?
Look at that. Yeah, I was going to say. Would you like to say anything since you're?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jett. I am just so privileged to recognize these two wonderful people and have them receive, this is multiple character recognition program, Citizen of Character Award for 2018. Lisa Cowher and Marty Campmeyer. They are phenomenal people. They have a passion for the community of McHenry and they saw an area in which they could serve. And that was to take care of some people that might not have as good a Christmas as without their aid in helping out the food banks. And I just really salute them in helping make McHenry a better place in which to live for all our residents. Thank you, Kay. Thank you.
You got the thin app on that thing?
You always look good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address the council at this time as it pertains to the consent agenda or any other unrelated items on the agenda this evening? See none? Moving forward, the consent agenda. Is there any council members wanting to pull any items for separate considerations, 7A through 7M? I will say that there's a, for 7I, there's an updated site plan in front of you. So if you could take a look at that. But at this time, I'm looking to see if any council members want to pull any other items. Alderman Schaefer?
Can we just pull the parks permit list and applications just for discussion? Any questions?
What?
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other council members want to pull any other items? See none? At this time, looking for a motion to approve items 7A through 7I and 7K through 7M. M, right? Did someone just say N? L? Payment of bills, right?
I think we added, I think it's L. Is there other? Was there other minutes something there? Also, which one is one of the first?
16.
The 16, the 13. K is not.
K is not on there, okay.
It's L.
It's L, I apologize.
This is a draft.
I got the draft agenda. So, there are motion. Alderman Santee?
I will make the motion as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion on these items? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman McKenna?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes. Thank you, council. The item that was pulled by Jeff Schaefer is Alderman Schaefer, sorry, is 7J. I'm looking for a motion to approve 7J Parks Facilities Specialty Use Permits. Alderman Schaefer? Second? Alderman Santee?
I'll second.
Discussion on this item?
The question I had is on some of these new forms, there doesn't show that there was a fee paid. Do we know that that, I just was concerned that that's being collected. And then on one, I'm sure it is, but on one, it, the fee section's not filled out at all. So isn't it seen and approved by everybody? I just sometimes take an extra glance at those and just want to make sure that that's being taken care of.
I can assure you they're being paid. I will make sure that those forms get filled out in entirety. I'm not sure why they weren't, they typically are and should have been. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McKenna? McKenna?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes. Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is individual action items. 8A, I am looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance granting a zoning map amendment to C5 Highway Commercial. Conditional use permit to allow an automobile fueling station and variances for the property located at southeast corner of Dayton Street in South Illinois Route 31. Doug Martin, can you present this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. The applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment.
The applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment, conditional use permit and variances to construct a fueling station with convenience store and commercial fueling lanes at the southeast corner of Dayton Street in South Illinois Route 31.
Thank you, Doug.
For a speedway fueling station, I should say, I apologize.
Thank you, Doug. Motion for this item? Alderman Santi.
I will make a motion for item eight A as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McHavick?
Second.
Discussion on this item by council? No questions? No questions? At this time, open up to the public, is there any public input regarding this item? See none? This time, turn it back over to council. Last chance for discussion, prior to vote. Alderman Glab.
I just wanna make a statement of the fact that this piece of property versus the north end, kind of a whole different animal and it's a lot easier to get comfortable with this. There's not that many residents that are gonna be affected and the address and egress and everything's been fairly well organized.
Thank you, Alderman Glab. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman McHavick.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item on the agenda is the motion to approve connection to the city sanitary sewer system for the property located at 1920 Orchard Beach Road with conditions. Director Schmidt, is that your?
That's mine.
Nope, oh, man, you're just on fire today, second item in a row, all right. Director Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mike Chloe contacted the city about connecting to the city sanitary sewer system for the property at 1920 Orchard Beach Road and is requesting to do so this evening.
Thank you. At this time, looking for a motion. Alderman Schaefer.
I'll make that motion to approve this contact, connection to the city sanitary sewer with the following conditions. Property must annex when it becomes contiguous. Non-resident's fee must be paid. Sanitary sewer must be extended if Mr. Chloe sells the property. Recapture fee is required at the time of permit in accordance with the existing recapture agreement and a memorandum of recording shelter every quarter against this property, 1920 Orchard Beach Road.
Thank you, Alderman Schaefer. Second? Alderman McHavick?
I'll second it.
Discussion on this item? Alderman Schaefer.
This isn't part, we had one down there several years ago that had recapture fees too. Is that on the other side of the road? Is that why this isn't part of this one or?
No, this is, and I just wanna clarify with the recommendation, it's, if the property to the north wants to connect, he has to extend the sewer to his north property line instead of selling the property. So, just that one clarification is, as part of the conditions. That, that's just my error. No, that, that property with the recapture is 1910. This property is subject to that recapture and will have to pay that recapture.
Okay. Do they, and they are aware of that?
Yes, yes, that's, that'll be due at permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah. Is this property not considered contiguous now?
It, yeah, it's not contiguous.
Even though the properties across, that back up to Orchard Beach Road are in the city?
Yeah, Orchard Beach Road's a private road.
Correct. So, it's not considered contiguous because of Orchard Beach Road then?
Correct, and then, and, and the river can't service continuity either. At that, at that, at that particular location.
What, what would be the reason why we would not want to annex this property at this point in time?
We can't.
It was, or we just absolutely can't do that?
No. We, we can't 'cause it's not contiguous.
Because of that private road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Alderman Glab?
Yeah. We've never done this in the past. Plymouth the North.
I'm sorry?
Plymouth the North.
No, we, we have, we have annexed property if they're contiguous, yes.
Across private roads.
Not across private roads.
Plymouth the North was, is that what? Was not dedicated to any, so it was a private roadway.
You mean Plymouth by Northside?
Yeah. When we closed off that road years back?
I'm not, I, I didn't know Plymouth was a private road.
It was at the time. As I recall, I checked with the township and the county and of course, the city had no, no interest in it at the time and it got annexed in across, was that North or Northside? No, I think it was North. Plymouth's a North or?
Northside.
It was so many years ago.
Yeah. It could be, if, if we could, we would.
Yeah. Well, here's, here's the thing. Nobody cares to, to hook in along that strip with the city of McHenry over the years because of the fact that they'd rather stay out in the county. Not until such time as their septics fail and it's so much less probably expensive to hook into the city. And it's actually a better benefit for the ecology and everything else because of the fact that we're better off hooking in than having those septics that have ourselves how, how old some of those are. And, and maybe that's where we start hooking in because we pretty much wrap around this parcel, this little subdivision that's over here, do we not?
Pretty much, we're, we're getting there, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it really would be to the benefit of all the river users and possibly for the city of McHenry also. I mean, how do we put pipelines into these non-contiguous parcels?
Well, we need to make.
How do we get the source, get, get to that?
We need permission. We need an easement.
The main line is on our existing rightway that we received from the annexation of Riverside House. So, so the service is, is private.
So, the service has to go across a roadway that the property owner does not own.
Correct. With association, assuming.
So, do we get?
No, we don't know that.
I'm sorry?
We, we don't know that.
We don't know that?
We don't know who owns the road. There's an assumption that it's the association, but it could also be the, either property owner, one of the property owners, we just don't know.
Well, I, I, I think, needless to say, the right thing to do tonight would be to take and bring this in, but I think we need to look at this, this whole area here. Maybe some of the other ones that we've had dealings with, and I'm not saying next week or whatever, but sooner or later, some of these, these properties should be looked at, whether they should come into the city or not, whether or not would be more advantageous for us. My opinion, but that's our people, right?
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? At this time, open up to the public, is there any public input on this item? See none? Back to council, last chance for discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman McHavick.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. This next item, before I ask for a motion, I just wanna say Don Hanson had passed away this weekend on a motorcycle accident, so I just wanna say our prayers on behalf of the staff and certainly the council, that our prayers are with the family as they go through this time, so just so happens this is on the agenda. So, at this time, looking for a motion to approve assignment variance request for Hanson's Alignment and Auto at 1313 North, North Drive. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second. Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, just the fact that, for clarification, I'll publicly, and it's the fact that the sign variance is only for that business, correct? If the business were to change, they would not have, 'cause that sign variance is given to Hanson's Alignment Auto Service.
Typically, it runs with the property.
I'm sorry?
Typically, it runs with the property.
That's not what this motion says. That's why I'm, I'm questioning it and asking.
Right, that would have to be. The applicant being Don Hanson's, but typically the sign variance is associated with the address.
So, I guess my question is, is who are we giving the conditional use to? Are we not giving it to the business, we're giving it to the property at the same, correct?
Yes.
Then the motion should probably be clarified that way. Because basically, the Hanson's Alignment Auto Service at 1313 North, correct? Should be just the, the property at North, 1313 North Drive.
So, you just wanted, you just wanted to be held at Hanson's Alignment Auto and that's it?
That's how I feel, yes. At this point, for me to support it, that's, I, I could support the Hanson's Alignment Auto Service, even though it's what, double the normal size of the, the allowable sign, but I can understand the situation, but depending on the type of service that, that's out there, I may have reservations about some, if it was a different type of business. And if we allow this and we don't tie it just to that business, then down the road, who knows what could happen?
We, we would need clarification on that. Is it tied to the name Hanson's Auto, whatever the name is on the sign, or is it tied to the ownership of the property or the nature of the business? We need to know what the trigger is in order to lose the right to have the sign.
I'd feel comfortable, like I said, if it was to that, that business. That's where I'm sitting, so.
Well, is it, isn't the way that the motion was made for the business, it's not made for the address, it's made for the business? The motion that's on the table, correct?
Well, it says both, so. But it does say, it was Hanson's Alignment Auto Service, which is the applicant, at 1313 North.
So, who, whoever made the motions, do you wanna change it to making sure that it stays with Hanson's Alignment?
If I, if I could just say something, because obviously, we don't know where this is going. I did get contacted by the applicant's family today, asking for it to go forward still based on what happened this weekend. But as far as the name, and, and I can't imagine that a name would change, but I, I really don't know where it's gonna go, but they do wanna proceed with the sign. So, I know that the name of the business is gonna stay the same. I just, you know, don't know where, where that lies.
Order share and so forth.
I, in my opinion, the address would be the best thing to do and then maybe make, maybe make a, an amendment to it that says, you know, if it changes use or whatnot, the sign variance no longer exists. We can do that, but it needs to be clear. So, we have lots of things on the table here that are unclear. I'm not sure where, where we're going with this.
I'll remove my motion and then whoever can make a new motion.
So, since Alderman Glab was the main, the part of this, is the intent, the words on the sign, as long as the words on the sign are the same as Hanson's Alignment and Auto, the variance is solid.
Alderman, yeah, I, I was just gonna say that it's not, whether it says Hanson's or not, as much as the type of business. I have no problems, you know, if, if the name changes, you know, if there, it's sold to another entity and, and it's still a, that, that business, I wouldn't have that big of a problem, but if the business changes.
Okay, so long as it ma- is maintained as an auto, what is it, an auto repair store?
Yeah.
Auto. Auto and Alignment Repair Shop?
Yeah, then I could.
Would that be good?
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty straightforward.
Alderman Santi? And I, I agree with Alderman Schaefer. We, we ceased removing it, I have to remove my second, so I agree with that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so at this time, looking for a motion?
So, perhaps the new motion would be a motion to approve sign variance request for Hanson's Alignment and Auto at 1313 North Drive, so long as the business establishment remains in auto and alignment repaired service station. Repair station, repair shop.
Alderman Glab?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion on this item? Open it up for public comment input on this item? See none, going back to council, last time for discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman McHavick.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a request to transfer a class F2-10 liquor license from Jeep Shopping Go Incorporated, DBA Riverside Shopping Go, to Baji Two Incorporated, DBA Riverside Shopping Go, located at 1325 North Riverside Drive. Mr. Shaw is here, which, who is the applicant, taking over this business. I met with him this morning and it is his first business with, as far as the liquor is concerned. I, I do have information for him this evening on the times and so forth that I do have in front of me, which I'll give you after this. But at this time, I'm looking for that motion. Alderman Schaefer?
Trying to make that motion complete, as you just stated.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Curry?
I'll second.
Discussion on this item? See none? At this time, open up for public comment, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment or input on this item? See none? Back to council, any last discussion items, comments? No? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman McHavick.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Congratulations and good luck to Mr. Shaw. If you could come up here, I'd like to give you. This has the time for the closing.
Time's on it.
Okay. So, it's in there for you. All right. Good luck. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I love you. Have a good night. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a request for a Class A liquor license to Chen's Jackpot Cafe Incorporated, DBA Chen's Asian Cafe, located at 4117 Shamrock Lane, formerly Bearability. Mr. Chen is here as the applicant. I met with him a week ago, discussed the, the property and also discussed liquor license and ordinances and so forth. He has another location as well. I believe it was Round Lake, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, he is here, if there's any questions at this time, looking for that motion. Alderman Santi?
I'll make the motion to request for a liquor, a Class A liquor license formerly Bearability, Lake Zurich and to Chen's Jackpot Cafe. Chen's Asian Cafe located at 4117 West Shamrock Lane.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Devine? Thank you. Any discussion or comments on this item? Alderman Glab?
It's affecting me one mistake that I can see in his past and that's affecting him to open up here first. Should've opened up here before Round Lake.
Any other discussion or comments? This time, open up for a public comment or input from the public, is there any other comments at this time? See none? Last time for discussion by council? No? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman McHavick.
Yes.
Yes. Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
And Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, moving on to staff reports, Director Hopson?
Before we meet again, we will have our Memorial Day ceremony, so that will be on Memorial Day at Veterans Park and at Tanyaum. We also had an exciting thing happen over the weekend and that was our city boat launch opened up. So, we just finished up all of our constructions, waiting on Friday, so it was kind of a soft opening for us on Saturday, but it was extremely well received. We had between season pass holders and paid users for the day. Between Saturday and Sunday, we had about 15 users for the weekend without any advertising.
Thank you, Director Hopson. Any other staff reports this evening? See none? See none? Moving on to mayor and city council comments. I'd just like to ask or let you know I'd like to change the council meeting from July 9th to July 10th. I know there's a couple Aldermen that have reached out to me as well regarding this day. There is the police and fire golf outing. So along with myself, I think every, there's a few that would like to attend. So is everyone okay with changing that date to that Tuesday? And it does fill up fast, so if you were looking to golf, please text me or email me. If you don't golf, Alderman McCaback? Alderman McCaback? Go ahead.
My glove's in the garage.
Long time! Been there for 20 plus years.
All I was gonna say is, do we need to make a motion on this considering we need to make a motion to approve all our meeting dates or something?
I think the date's wrong.
So we're changing the date from the night to the time?
Yeah, you're changing.
Do you want to make a motion? Or is that what we need to do?
You need to make a motion and either call it a special meeting or you need to have a 10-day notice if you're gonna change the regular meetings. But either way, you need everyone to agree.
So we don't officially need a motion?
You don't officially need a motion, we're gonna set it right where the other.
Okay. Everyone's good? Yeah. Perfect. I'm gonna turn it over to city council comments. Alderman Schaefer?
Also wanted to say that the Parks Department held a Family Fun Day Open House event on Saturday and it was, I believe, all, most of the major partners, so to speak, within the football, baseball, pigtail, all had tables. It was very, it was actually a nice little event, very well attended during the time period I was there.
Thank you. Any other city council comments? See none? At this time, I asked for the public, anyone that's in this room to please exit. We have an executive session that will approximately be about 10 to 15 minutes. So at this time, once we get a motion, I would ask you to exit outside and then you're more than welcome to come back in after this. Have a good night, sir.
Hey. Great meeting.
Thank you.